In the absence of a quorum of the members of the Victorville City Council, the city clerk calls to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the City Council performing the housing functions of the former Victorville Redevelopment Agency. Let the record reflect that there are no closed session items scheduled for the 5:00 session tonight, therefore that meeting will stand adjourned until the commencement of the regular meeting at 7:00 PM.
I love that.
Oh, God, I love children.
We'll call the, uh, to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville and the City Council acting or sitting at the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the City Council performing the housing functions of the former Victorville Redevelopment Agency. There was no closed session, therefore there are no announcements. We do have the invocation, the Pledge of Allegiance. Invocation will be by Pastor George Birkley, Managing Associate Pastor with the High Desert Church. Pledge of Allegiance will be led by our own Police Chief, Captain Don Yoder. Please rise.
Our Heavenly Father, we are so grateful for this city and the business that is conducted here in this room. I just pray for wisdom for our leaders. We are grateful for the fact that your word says that you set up our leaders. And Lord, it's our job to respect them and pray for them and honor them, and so, Lord, we do that. We ask your blessing on these proceedings and that, Lord, above all else, that you would always receive, or just glory and honor forever in your name.
Amen.
(inaudible) in the United States of America, in the republic which stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
We do have some special presentations tonight, and first of all, I would like to call Regina Bell to come forward. The presentations are for the winners of a Better Way Teen Dating Violence Awareness Poster Contest, and I'll have Regina talk a little bit about the program before we pass out the certificates.
Well, thank you, Mayor Protem. And actually, I'm gonna ask Anita Gomez, who is actually our youth advocate for A Better Way, to come up, and she's gonna make the presentations actually for this evening.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm here briefly to talk about what this is about right here. If you're not aware, February is the National Awareness Month for Teen Dating Violence. As of 2010, it was noted that it needed to be a whole month observation versus the first week in just February. So what we asked for the first time this year at A Better Way is to get the teens involved, and we came up with a creative messaging poster contest, and we had nine entries, and tonight we're gonna be recognizing our top three. So if I'd like to at this moment, if I could bring up first place winner Haley Phelan, who's from Oak Hills High School, please come up.[296.02][296.02](applause) Hold your winning entry, too. I'd also like to say that this is our first year doing this. We plan to have it each year, and it's gonna grow. We'd like to include different grade levels as well. We did get a lot of more people who talked about interest, but their entries were not received on time, so we're working things out for next year. But the first place winner receives $300.[337.81][337.81](applause) I'd like to thank her for her entry. Thank you. It's beautiful. Next, we'd like to call up our second place winner Adrienne Countryman from Encore High School.[351.56][351.56](applause) They all did such a great job, didn't they? Now, we'd like to call our third place winner Courtney Lewandowski from Encore High School. Would you please come join us?[392.81][392.81](applause) Our work of art. And our third place winner receives cash prize of $100.[412.41][412.41](applause)
And while they're taking the picture, one thing we would like to say is thank you to the City of Victorville and the City Council for allowing us to do this and their support. All nine entries will be on display here in City Hall for the entire month of March, so we really wanna thank them for supporting us and supporting our young people in getting this message out. Thank you.
Thank you, Regina. Congratulations once again. Now, we have the city clerk presents the agenda for the council.
City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. It is requested that all present please silence cell phones, pagers, and other electronic devices, and that personal conversations be kept to a minimum during the conduct of the meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item which appears on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards that have been placed on the agenda table in the council chambers lobby and give it to the city clerk for the record prior to consideration of the item. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card when the item comes up for discussion by the city council. The public comment period is the time and place for the general public to address the city council on any item within their jurisdiction that is not on the agenda. It is requested that a speaker card also be submitted to the city clerk for anyone who wishes to address the city council during the public comment period. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less as deemed necessary by the mayor, depending upon the number of individuals desiring to speak. All communications are to be addressed directly to the city council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Individuals who fail to adhere to these guidelines may be asked to yield the floor. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. Disruptive conduct includes, but is not limited to, addressing the council without being recognized, not addressing the subject before the council, repetitiously addressing the same subject, failing to relinquish the podium when requested to do so, verbal outbursts or comments from the audience. Thank you for your cooperation and adherence to these rules. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the city council. There is additional information on the dais for the council tonight regarding public hearing item number nine. There are two letters that have been submitted in support, one from NIA Capital and one from Strategic Development Advisors, and those are all the revisions I have. Mayor Protem Cabralis.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have the public comment, and I do have two cards. The first one will be Alan Richard.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council members. My name is Alan Ricard. I live in, oops, sorry. I live in Apple Valley. I'm here on behalf of the friends and volunteers at the Victorville Route 66 Museum. Several of you have been there, I understand, and we are very excited. We're really proud of the museum. It's really, in our opinion, a diamond that we are very fortunate to have here in the city. It attracts people from all over the world, and I'm on a committee, and what we're doing is we're, each of you should be receiving a copy of the project, and what we're trying to do is put up a mural on the side of that building there. As you know, when the Halstad Building was torn down last year, it really opened up that whole area to view that museum, and we were fortunate last year to be able to use that area for our annual car show and classic car show and fundraiser. So the idea came up about putting a mural on that wall, and then, and with that, we really feel it's gonna stimulate the economy even more here in town. As people come over, that's gonna be even more of a photo opportunity location, especially in light of the fact that we're having the, we're planning the Route 66 Festival, which is gonna be held here in Victorville. We're planning that. That will be in August. There's gonna be thousands of people coming into this town, and having that mural there is gonna attract a lot of people into town, and as we all know, what we need to do is stimulate this economy right now, and having people come into town and spend money, that's a good thing. So what I'm asking for right now, bringing this to your attention, just to make you aware of what we're doing, I hope you think the mural is a nice rendition. We were able to secure a local artist who is a real friend of the Route 66 and a car buff, and he's gonna, he's a very famous muralist, done a lot of work in San Bernardino County. His name is Rob McDermott, and he's gonna do this mural for a real good bargain price. I mean, almost, I mean, for what it would cost, it's a fraction of what it would cost. And we're in the fundraising phase right now, and we're well on our way to getting the money, but I understand there may be some conditional use permits that will be required, and what I'd like to do, if we can, is solicit your support in helping us expedite any permits that were required. Our intent is to get this mural up within the next 90 days before it gets hot, and obviously before the festival comes into town. So basically, I just wanted to make you aware of what we're trying to do. I hope you like the mural. I think it's gonna be a beautiful piece of work on that building and make that even more of an attraction for people from all over the world. So with that, I wanna thank you very much for your time this evening, and we look forward to your support, if you could, helping us make this a reality. Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Is this your first approach to the city on this mural, or have you approached staff before?
I haven't, we haven't done anything up to this point. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Well, staff will contact you. In fact, he's waiting for you back there.
Okay, terrific. I didn't know who to talk to. We did look on the internet, I understand there's some permits that were required.
Our project director is back there, and he'll be glad to.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate your time this evening, and thank you for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Ricard. I'm sorry I mispronounced your name.[848.51][848.51](applause)
And next is Randall Mosaro.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Cabralis and esteemed City Council. Again, I've been here, I've been here before, so you all know who I am, but for those of you that don't know me, I'm Randall Mosaro. I live here in Victorville. I'm a wildlife activist, also an actor in Hollywood. Tonight, I brought two gentlemen with me, and also following up on the gentleman before me, how he's bringing in business into the valley. Obviously, San Bernardino Sun has covered our meeting here in Victorville with the politicians, Angela Vias, Councilmember Angela Vias, and Mayor Ryan McEckern, that are running for Congress amongst, it was seven politicians that showed up at the wildlife meeting. But what I thought I would do tonight is bring in producers from Hollywood that are in the middle of shooting movies. They have a negotiate, they have a contract, ongoing contract with the Michael Jackson family. They've done something for Marlon Brando and his son Christian that passed away. They have some other movies in the makes right now and works, and I'd like to introduce you to them, if you don't mind, because they would like to also talk to you about maybe making, doing some filming up here in the high desert, getting away from Los Angeles, and maybe he's doing some filming up here. I would hope that Victorville would open their arms. Obviously, Victorville needs the money and looking for places cheaper to go ahead and film. So Mr. Cabralis and Mr. Robertson and the rest of the city council, if you don't mind, I'd like to introduce you to producer from Hollywood, Mr. Peter Arman. Peter, and producer, Mr. Rossi, I think he might have stepped out at this time, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Mayor Cabralis. I think that because of, I'm involved with the Native American Indian Festival, which is in Vegas, but here you have Native American Indians, and I think that from a perspective of movie making, you know, I did the Marlon Brando story, Brando Unauthorized, and I think that besides bringing business to your city, if you will, I think that there may be some interesting spots here that I could use for the Michael Jackson story. And let me be perfectly frank, when I say Michael Jackson story, I'm talking about the story of Gloria Berlin, who sold him his beautiful Neverland ranch and their experience together, and there'll be different locations for that. We'll be doing a lot of green screen, but certainly there may be some areas here that perhaps I could use for that, because it covers when he was 12 years old, and then she was, I think, 55 when she sold him the ranch and what went on and so forth at 27. So that would interest me, and, you know, I've done a lot of filming in Los Angeles. Perhaps we can do something. And there's always cost factors, you know, with films, so naturally, the city that's most cooperative, that would apply to that filmmaking certainly would be interesting to me. So afterwards, I'll give you my card, and it's a nice council chambers you have here. This is a surprise. I didn't expect to be doing this, but it's certainly nice meeting you all, and hope that I can bring some business to your city of Victorville, and thank you very much.
Those are all the cards that we have for the public comment, and at this time, we'll go into our Library Board of Trustees' agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Protem Cabralis. Motion carries with Mayor McEckern absent.
Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, there's no items. Next is Southern California Logistics Airport Authority. We have item number five, it's a request to approve an exclusive negotiating agreement with E&amp;A, with Clayson Group.
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Councilmember Kennedy.
I have a question of Keith.
Mayor Cabralis, Keith's up on the dais with me now.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. You're used to him being out there.
You're used to being, yeah.
When you were mayor, he was always out there.
Yeah, huh, quick, you forget. I read the agreement, and I don't have a problem with that. I just wanna make sure that the exclusive part is just for the cargo operation. If somebody else wants to come in and say build hangars or other buildings within the airport part of the operation, that won't prohibit anyone from doing that.
Yeah, yes, that is correct. The purpose and scope is specifically to focus on cargo opportunities, so to the extent there are other business opportunities, while the effect of this agreement is in place, so long as those other business opportunities weren't cargo or cargo-related, then, yeah, there wouldn't be any precluding of those opportunities. Those are opportunities that the Airport Authority and its staff continue to pursue and will pursue. Basically, this is an exploratory document where we're protecting each other's rights to commit to work together over the course of the time.
Motion carries with Mayor McEckern absent.
Next, we have item number six for the successor agency to the RDA. It's a request to the City of Victorville, acting as successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency. Number one, approve the attached track youth permit agreement between Church &amp; Dwight Company Inc. and the successor agency, the Victorville Redevelopment Agency. And number two, confirm an appropriation amount of $10,000 to cost installation of a permanent safety device, which is reimbursable from Church &amp; Dwight.
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Mayor McEckern absent.
The Joint Powers Financing Authority, there are no items at the time of posting. We'll go to the Victorville Water District, consent calendar.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Mayor McEckern absent.
Next is the City Council, performing housing functions of the former RDA, and we have item number eight. It's a request to award a contract to Grayco Construction, Inc. of Phelan, California, for the rehab of the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, property located at 13605 Ironstone Circle, in the amount of $55,578.
Question, Keith, on the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, that has been operated through the RDA, it will continue to function, but not through the RDA, or will it stay in the successor agency until we know more?
Mr. Councilmember and rest of the council, this item is resulting from the NSP program. As you know, the original ward of funds was granted to the City of Victorville, and the City of Victorville eventually authorized the Redevelopment Agency to perform the responsibilities on its behalf, and I believe what we are currently working on is effectively dissolving that relationship between the City of Victorville and the RDA, so that the City of Victorville can effectively continue to carry out its responsibilities pursuant to the NSP program. In the meantime, there are transactions like this where we've, you know, we're basically in the middle of the project where the property has been acquired by the RDA or the former RDA, and there's still responsibilities to be carried out, which is why we're handling it in this fashion as the, as a successor entity for now. Eventually, we expect that all of it will roll under the city umbrella, but in the meantime, those that we are in the middle of the process on will do it in this way.
Brought it up. Keith, are we, is there any projects out there where we're in, kind of inherently in halfway stage, where we've invested some of the money and we're either finishing the project up or halfway through it, and then there's some more expenses to be incurred later on? Do you envision any of those transactions in front of us? We've got so many real estate pieces out there, I'm not sure how many of them have any contingency projects built into them, but I'm wondering if we're halfway there, if there's no more source of revenue behind that, do you make a decision on whether we can complete that transaction, or what happens?
Well, the way the rules have been written, especially for those projects that are underway, and to answer the first question, the projects that are underway, we effectively have to finish up in this fashion as a successor entity, and the actions that we've previously taken with respect to EOPS or ROOPS, which have been the schedules, they include all of these various projects that have been undertaken or have a contract obligation that was in place prior to January 1st, 2011, which was the effective date of the dissolution bill. So we'll continue to do that, and then, of course, rely on the funding through the Redevelopment Trust Fund in connection with those EOPS or ROOPS schedules. So there's gonna be a number of these, and to answer the basic question, there's quite a few transactions that we're either in the middle of or in the very initial stages, and maybe because due to the economy, the project hadn't even physically started.
Refresh my memory, what was the, how many millions of dollars did the state take from us last year out of our fund that we had in reserve? About $7 million, was it, or?
Oh, combined, as far as ERAF, the combined Victorville RDA and Victorville share of VIDA, I think it was about $12 million.
$12 million, yeah, it was $12 million. That was just a taking, you know, just to let you know that we're working through those issues, but nevertheless, that's the kind of issues you gotta be bumping into, completing up the mess that they've created for us, and also stealing the revenues that we had lined up to pay for those activities. So this is just one of those small parts of it, but anyway, bring your attention. Thank you.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabralis, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Mayor McEckern absent, and Councilmember Vias voting no.
Next, we have the City Council agenda, and the first item is public hearing, and there's item, there are two items under public hearing. Item number nine is a public hearing called to hear arguments for or against approving Amendment PLN 10-00027 and to introduce ordinance number 2272. We'll now open up the public hearing on item number nine. Anyone wishing to speak for or against item number nine, please come to the podium. Anyone wishing to speak for or against item number nine? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing, and will the clerk read the ordinance, please?
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville, approving amendment PLN 10-00027, a Title 16 municipal code amendment to allow off-site signage for shopping centers, City of Victorville. Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Mayor Protem Cabralis, to waive further reading. Introduce ordinance number 2272. Motion carries with Mayor McEckern absent.
Item 10 is a public hearing called to hear arguments for or against approving amendment PLN 11-00013 and to introduce ordinance number 2289. I will now open up the public hearing on item 10. Anyone wishing to speak for or against item 10, please come to the podium. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing on item 10, and city clerk?
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville, approving amendment PLN 11-00013, a Title 16 municipal code amendment to allow for solar facilities within the exclusive agriculture AE zoning district, City of Victorville. Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild, to waive further reading and introduce ordinance 2289. Motion carries with Mayor McEckern absent. Motion carries with Mayor McEckern absent.
Item number 11 is a consent calendar?
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild.
I'd like to pull item A.
Eighteen eleven?
Motion carries with Mayor McEckern absent.
I'd like to point out that on the commercial demand schedule, the attorney's fees was $126,000 for the city attorney for the month of December, which is outrageous.
Approval?
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Mayor McEckern absent, and Councilmember Vias voting no.
Item 12, it's a request to approve the fiscal agent agreement, bond purchase agreement, and the preliminary official agreement as set forth by resolution number 12-013.
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Councilmember Kennedy.
I thought we were going to have a presentation?
I believe we do have representatives here from underwriters and bond counsel that if you have questions, they can give you a very brief presentation. Jim, if you'd like to?
Jim Anderson is a consultant on the job. Good evening, Mayor Protem, councilmembers. My name is Jim Anderson. I'm with the law firm McFarlane &amp; Anderson. We're referred to as Bond Counsel. We're engaged by the city in connection with the formation of the Community Facilities District and the proceedings that lead to the issuance of the bonds. Before you, you have the resolution that approves the bond financing documents. The indenture or fiscal agent agreement sets out the terms of the bonds. The preliminary official statement describes the bond security for the bonds, provides background information on the bonds and on the district. As I'm sure you're aware, this CFD relates to a neighborhood community that had been built. The process for this started actually 2007, five years ago. The district was formed in June of 2007. Originally, it was intended that the district would proceed with bond issuance in late 2007, early 2008, but just with the way the housing market went at that time, the financing did not proceed. Since that time, the developer has moved forward with the project, completed construction of all 247 houses within the community. They're actually in the process, have escrows for 17 of the remaining 18 houses that have not sold. They expect those to close by the end of this month, and there's one house available. So they're looking for one more buyer. If you have specific questions, be happy to address them.
Jim, before we get to the specific questions, can you address for the council and the public the difference between this bond and, say, an actual city bond?
Sure. The Community Facilities District is set up pursuant to state laws, sort of a separate entity and financing mechanism. So the security for the bonds that are issued by the Community Facilities District is solely the special tax that's levied on the property within the Community Facilities District, in this case, the 247 completed homes. The security for other city financings might be the general fund, or you might do financings for different, you know, the water district, for example, which has a revenue source to pay it. In this case, the owner at the time of formation was the developer. There was an election held. The owner, as the sole property owner, voted to impose a tax on the property. The homeowners have had that tax disclosed to them. The tax has actually been levied on houses since the fiscal year 2007, '08. So it's been on the roll, and people coming in would be aware of it. People who are living there have been aware of it.
Thank you, Jim.
It's, I guess, one other kind of little point. Putting the financing in place this time will actually enable the tax that gets levied next year to be lowered a little bit because the bond structure contemplates some coverage in the maximum revenue that could be derived from the district from what's actually needed to pay the bond. So you'll see about a 10% reduction in the tax next year once the financing's in place.
Why would the Facilities District issue a bond as opposed to just pay the tax, accumulate the tax dollars, and do whatever work they need to do?
In some cases, this Community Facilities Districts will issue the bond and be doing the work as the neighborhood's developing. So the proceeds would actually be used and put in some of the kind of regional infrastructure, if you will, related to the project. In this case, with the sequence that occurred due to the housing market, the developer has been required by the city because they didn't know when the district would move forward. They didn't know the amount of proceeds that would be available when the bonds were issued to pay to the city amounts equal to the development impact fees that are imposed with regard to the houses as they were permits pulled and construction completed over time. So the, at this point, the bond financing will become available. The proceeds will get used on what you're current, you know, looking at your current project list for the Development Impact Fee Program, which at this time is the La Mason Esqualla interchange. Had this financing proceeded in 2008, it would have been looking at what was needed at that time or soon after the bonds were issued. But you don't typically, you would not see a district typically that would levy the tax and then just take it over time. There may be some jurisdictions that do that, or that do that till the houses are built out and then sell the bonds because you get a better interest rate, and depending on how the district is set up, you are making some choices for the time the money is available and for the interest costs that you're paying and using revenues to pay interest as opposed to being able to generate dollars you can use for facilities. So in the case of this district, it had been anticipated the dollars would be available earlier, and so now that the houses are complaint, the dollars would be available.
And how is it this is linked to the Niskwali interchange?
It's really through the Development Impact Fee Program. That's a project.
Whatever is on our project list.
Yeah, it's what's on your project list, what's your priority. For purposes of when you issue the bonds, there are state rules that apply to make sure you issue them in accordance with state law, and there's an authorized list of what types of facilities that you can pay for. And there's sort of another world that involves federal rules for issuing tax-exempt bonds, and one of those rules is just making sure you don't issue a bond before it's time. So we want to make sure when you do borrow the money that you have a plan to spend it and that you spend it. So now that we're at the point of issuing the bonds, you look at what's there to spend it on, and you wouldn't sit on the money. You would spend it, and that project is a priority for the city at this time.
Councilmember Kennedy, the way it works is through the Development Impact Fee Study. Each of these projects has a Development Impact Fee that their money goes towards, and each one might have different projects that technically they fund, but those projects may not be ready for development at this time. At this time, the council's focus is the interchange, and that's where the bulk of our Development Impact Fees will be going for a little while now.
Am I correct? Is it about 3.4 million out of this fund goes to Niskwali?
Yeah, we, the, the resolution, when I prepared it, I used 3.4 as kind of a high number because when we do these financings, generally the numbers sometimes move around depending on interest rates, what's being done. In this case, the dollars available for Niskwali will be about 2.4 million. There will be dollars that go to a reserve fund, some for cost of issuance. The actual bond amount, we were looking at about 3.2, but will probably be under 3.1 by the time we get around to issuing it. So we're really targeting the, a certain dollar amount of proceeds, and then depending on interest rates, will be what they are with the, and then the par amount, and depending on how the bonds are sold, will get to a certain number.
And Councilmember Rothschild, this, the majority of those funds will actually be replacing dollars that the developer put up on the front end of the project, and he will then be reimbursed through the credit agreement.
Yeah, there's a credit agreement in place in this case for releasing the funds the developer has paid once the bond proceeds are available.
And that's for the, the monies that were spent by the developer to?
He placed money on deposit with the city as he pulled the permits, and they've waited a long time to get to the point. I mean, they've, we've had conversations over the years about, is it possible to issue now? If we issued, what would the proceeds be like? What would the interest rates be like? And just the way the economy's going, at the time this was formed, we're still in a market where you could do a bond financing as this one was planned at the beginning of the development of the neighborhood, and you have the models up, some initial sales, and see there's interest, and then expect the development to occur over a couple of years for a number of houses that were involved. But in 2008's, kind of when things swung the other way, and throughout the state, really you've seen a transition to financings getting done at the tail end once the houses were there. So rather than being able to do it earlier, you end up doing it later. But this district has had a very good payment record in terms of the payments by the homeowners. So that's a positive factor for the city when they go to market. There's a history. The houses are there. There's a history of payment. There's an awareness of, you know, how the community's doing. We also actually have in the audience, depending on the questions, Jose Vera from Stifel Nicolaus is here as the underwriting firm. So to the extent there were questions, it's about what the market's like for all these types of bonds or for these, for the city, you know, we can answer those questions as well.
Yes. I did a little research to understand what Melrose taxes are, and it says here, "Melrose Community Facility Districts," referred to CFDs, "raise money through special taxes that must be approved by two-thirds of the voters within the district. A CFD is formed to finance major improvements and services within the district, which might include schools, roads, libraries, police, and fire protection services, or ambulance services." Is that correct?
That's a correct statement of the act generally. The two-thirds vote in this case was by the property owner because at the time the district was formed, there were no registered voters within the district. So the act provides for the landowner, when there are less than 12 registered voters, to be the voter for the election.
Okay, well, here it says improvements within the district.
Oh, the, the improvements have to be within the boundaries of the district. They have to relate to the district. So in this case, what's being financed relates to the Development Impact Fees that tie back to the study that's done that evaluates the burden that this development put on the city for facilities that are needed for, as a result of the development of the property. In the past, the, prior to CFDs that were done had, were structured more as you're describing, where those proceeds were done, available at the beginning of the project, and the proceeds were used for things that you would see either directly within the neighborhood or on the edges of it because there might be road widens needed to provide access for traffic and things. But at the time this one was formed, the facilities list tied back to the Development Impact Fee study that was done that identified, you know, kind of your overall impact fees and facilities generally.
So do we have the original, the original agreement of how it would be spent?
Facilities list was approved in a resolution adopted in 2007. So, yeah, there's a record of that.
Is that in our agenda today?
It's, I don't believe that resolution wouldn't be in the agenda, but the improvements that are being done are done because they're on, in the Development Impact Fee facilities list.
That'd be described in the official statement, too.
And, and what the description of the La Mason Esqualla interchange is described in the official statement.
So that's a yes or a no?
The facilities that are, it's an approved facility, yes.
And that's in the agenda, the original?
Now, the original resolution from 2007, June 19, 2007, wouldn't be part of this package that's in front of you here. I mean, there's a record here in the city clerk's office of that resolution. I didn't, I didn't bring one with me, I'm sorry.
What portion of this CFD, what, what portion is to be used for roads? Because it says here, you know, schools, libraries, roads, police, fire, ambulance.
The, I'm not sure what you're reading from. The, the
I'm trying.
The study that relates to the city's Development Impact Fee identifies dollars for categories for road. Water's not included in this CFD as an example. The city didn't do water at the time the district was formed. So there isn't a component relating to water in for this.
I think what she's reading is, is the list of things that can't be done.
Generally.
But that, that doesn't mean you do all of them. Those are the, what she's reading is.
So there's not like portions where it's portioned out? I, I'm wondering, my, my issue is, is that if I buy a home in, in a district and I'm paying this Melrose, Melrose tax, I, I expect the infrastructure to be within my district, and then to find out later that I paid all this extra money towards this, this tax, and then the money's being used and diverted to someplace outside of my track. That would be a little bit upsetting and disappointing to me. So I'm wondering, how do you get around that? And, and I'm, and I'm hearing that you formed this when there was nobody living there or registered voters. So you got around the two-thirds?
Well, no, the, well, the two-thirds is, is by the landowner because that's the process at the time. The landowners are made aware of the tax. The point you're raising about around me, as I said, historically, the first two CFDs were done, as you've described, targeted at, things located in this particular project, I think at the time, when they were looking at things and looking at the timing, the process was set up to identify a tax that would be in place. And the list that was described and put in place was set up to tie to the Development Impact Fees that the, while a homeowner might not see the road going by their neighborhood, the same way that that road goes by that neighborhood, that house being there has an impact on the city. The Development Impact Fee Study analyzes those impacts and arrives at a dollar amount for different categories that each house is obligated for. And what this CFD is doing is providing a mechanism to finance the dollar amount equivalent to those Development Impact Fees. So it
Okay. At, at the time that we approved to move forward with this Niskwali interchange, this was never brought up as part of the financing, and it's now being brought up. So are we being, are we, are we short funds here, or why, why are we
I think.
scrapping for dollars?
Let me cover that one, Jim.
Sure.
The, the way the Development Impact Fees work is there's a study that's done, and it's based on the entirety of all the homes that are going to be built in Victorville, and the entirety of all the improvements needed. The Mason Esqualla interchange is just one of them. There's also other major roads, some smaller roads. There's also a parks fee. There is a fire fee to assist us with building a fire station to serve, fire stations to serve those new homes. There's also a city facilities fee. There's a total of five different fees. So it's taken in total. So there isn't a single list for this development that, that their fees are based on. The developer had the option of paying those Development Impact Fees upfront, and then, I suppose, tacking that on to the, to the price of the homes. Instead, the developer, in this case, chose back in 2007 to set up this tax voluntarily, and then he has to disclose that tax to everyone who buys a home, that there's an additional tax on that property. So there isn't a, a list of, of projects specifically for this development. It's based on, on a need to pay a Development Impact Fee that's based on a citywide Development Impact Fee. impact fee that's based on a citywide development impact fee.
Okay, so, we, we have to pay this money back?
The-
The $344 million?
The, yeah, the bonds will be repaid through the special tax that's levied on those 247 houses and-
And, and a lot of people that have this Melrose tax walk away from their homes. So, then what? Who's on the hook?
You don't have a history of that in this particular CFD, you actually have no one who has failed to pay tax for the first, I mean, there have been failures to pay during the three years, but at this point in time, there are no taxes delinquent for any year from '07, '08, '09, '09, '10, or '10, '11, maybe, maybe they didn't levy that first year, the first three years of levy, all the taxes are current, the first installment for this year, there are a few houses that didn't pay the first installment, that happens for a variety of reasons, historically in districts generally, I don't know this one specifically, you will see some of those cure by the second installment, some others cure by the June 30 date where it becomes defaulted, but anybody who failed to pay last fiscal year is current at this time.
We had a CFD in the past that actually built infrastructure and there was a failure to pay and ultimately it went negative for some time, it wasn't, didn't affect the city at all, the city wasn't obligated to make the payments on behalf of that community and ultimately the bondholders ended up having to simply wait until the taxes came back to get repaid.
Actually, that goes, the bondholders never missed a payment, there, there were bonds issued, there was a reserve fund, the, that financing was done prior to, in the documents you have in front of you, one of them is a disclosure agreement that says you will provide annually information about the district, when that district had problems, the city voluntarily provided comparable disclosure to investors, the investors were made aware of the status of tax payments, tax collections, there was never a payment missed, there was a period where the reserve was being drawn down incrementally to make the amount that was coming up short, but over the time, the properties, it was the developers who weren't paying also, in that case, it was not homeowners, the, it was raw land and it took a while to find in that economy new purchasers for that land.
And ultimately, that's what led to this being financed differently, waiting until the end of the project to, to actually go out for the bond, so that that shouldn't happen again.
It, it, it has never happened with one that's built out with homeowners, you're just not going to see half the people pick up and leave, if they did, somebody else would want the houses, it's just-
Okay, so with a yes or no, is the city of Victorville on the hook if we can't pay back the bond?
No, the special taxes are a special revenue source and that's the only source that will be used to pay the bonds.
Does credit rating have anything to do with selling the bonds, Victorville's credit rating?
These, these bonds will not affect the city's credit rating and the city's credit rating's not going to affect the sale of these bonds.
And what is the city's credit rating?
I'm not working, I'm sorry, I don't, I'm not working on a city financing, I don't know.
I don't know if the city has a credit rating, each bond issuance has its individual credit rating that's based both on the city and then also with any letters of credit that may be applicable based on each individual financing, but an overall credit rating, I'm not aware that we have anything like that.
And are you, are you the same bond counsel that approved all the other bonds that we've defaulted on?
Actually, no, I didn't have an opportunity to work on those, I've only worked on the CFD financings for you and an assessment district in the past, so-
Was it your firm?
Uh, no, my firm has only worked on the CFD financings and the assessment district.
And actually, since you brought it up, I do have some good news on that, last week, the VITA board approved the payment of those property taxes that we've been waiting for since December and we would anticipate receiving that check this week hopefully, and as soon as we receive it, we will be making the trustee hold and we will no longer be in default on those SCLA A-bonds.
That's all the questions I have.
Doug, is it fairly safe to say that that default situation will continue into the future, about as far as any of us can see?
I would agree with what you said, except for maybe that very last piece, there are projections done by our consultant that show that eventually we will catch up as the, the property values begin to, begin to rise again, eventually we will catch up, they're, they're looking out 20 to 30 years, however, I believe that, you know, based on some fairly conservative estimates, within about 10 years, we will have, I think, caught back up to that, to that issue, however, with the elimination of RDAs and the tax increment of VITA and the airport authorities still in question, it remains to be seen if that is still going to be an issue for this council after, after all that sorts out, or if that's going to be an issue for the, for the county and the tax assessor to, to work out.
And I think my other question is, is it an accurate statement that, that the Squawley interchange is going to be an improvement, a mitigating factor for the development impact or the impact of that particular development? You follow my question?
I think I, I would almost turn it around, if you will, having that interchange go in should be a benefit to that neighborhood and others because of the improvement in the traffic situation in an area of the city that this project is, it's not next, not directly there, but it's affected by that area.
Have the property owners, the 247, been notified of how the money is being spent?
Um, it, it, not directly, I mean, then the specific use has just come up recently with the bond financing going forward, it's really a function of the timing of this transaction and the timing of your expenditures, so the, the resolution was adopted and there's a record of that, the proceedings when this was started, I don't know that the city's had any questions about the use of the proceeds.
Well, yeah.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Motion carries with Mayor McEckern absent and Councilmember Vias voting no.
Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem, I need to recuse myself for item 13, I live in the Eagle Ranch area.
Item 13 is a request to award a contract to Stauffer's Landscape Inc. to paint all overhead structures with, within L-MET 2, which is Eagle Ranch, in an amount not to exceed $27,000.
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Mayor McEckern and Councilmember Vias absent.
Item 14 is a request to appoint two council members to serve with staff on the Housing Committee Development Grants Review Committee, do we have any volunteers from the council?
I've, I've done it in the past, I don't mind doing it again.
And I've, I've done it too, so I can, I'm a volunteer.
Yeah, I think I have a couple of clients who are going to be applying for that that would bear my-
That, is that okay with the rest of the council? Okay, so it's Mr. Rothschild and myself.
Okay.
Item 15, the request to direct staff to provide a report on the status of the increasing population of homeless families, I do have two cards and I'll, I'll get to those before we go into the regular discussion, we have Lee Williams. Yes, come to the podium, please, you have three, three minutes to state your case.
Copy, yeah, good night, good morning, good evening, City Council, Mayor Pro Tem, Cabralas, my name is Lee Williams, I'm a photographer here in the valley and it kind of started out by, by chance that I started taking pictures of homeless and doing some counts and things like that, I'm not really sure that the council or the city understands what the actual problem is, currently, there's about seven families that are living in vehicles at locations, at malls and things like that around the valley, and there's about another 173 that live in the riverbed area of Victorville, also onto the land of C-MAX, I'm not really exactly sure where the report came or who actually did the investigation, I would please ask you to dig a little deeper into that, I can actually help you with, with photographic and video evidence of that and with names and statements also, the situation is that anybody at any given time could be homeless within one or two paychecks away from being homeless, a lot of people are losing their houses, losing their jobs, companies are moving out of the valley, out of Victorville, there's companies where I work at SCLA that are laying people off and things like that and any of us can be homeless, it's not so much of an issue of drugs and alcohol, it's more of, they can't pay their fees, they lose their houses, they start living in their vehicles, code enforcement, the city and the police department say they don't have tags on their vehicles, they, and they impound their vehicle with all their belongings in them, so they end up living in the riverbed in a makeshift tent or a, a structure, and what I'm asking for is, is maybe to help the council and the city with a, a possible fix for the situation, or even so much as, as bringing people off the street, giving them a way to get back off the street money and jobs, maybe even some placement and see if we can mitigate the, the issue that's at hand, thank you for your time.
Thank you. And next we have Ron Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council members for letting me speak for a moment, actually, I would probably start to say, do you have any questions, because I don't consider myself an expert on this, but it is what I do for a living, you know, this is an ongoing situation, an ongoing topic, and if there's anything that I can help to bring some light to the table, that's why I'm here tonight, but just a couple of things really quick to, to state about our homeless problem, first of all, our census isn't always accurate, you know, they do a great job in, in counting the multitude of things, but when it comes to counting the poor and the homeless, a lot of times, because of pride issues, if you can even find them, they will tell you they're not, so what, what San Bernardino County says as the number of homeless is, in actuality, what we have in the high desert alone, and the majority of that is in the Victor Valley, in Victorville itself, part of the problem also is in our, parolees are being released and told to go to the river bottom for housing, they're actually dropped off there, so if you didn't know that, that's probably, parolees don't have anything else, nowhere else to put them, they don't know what to do with them, they call us, and by the way, I'm Ron Wilson with the Victor Valley Rescue Mission, sorry about that, but we have nowhere to house them, which is the third part of my, my reason for being here tonight is, I know that you're all aware and you're working towards a, a solution as far as zoning in your general plan, you're aware of Senate Bill 2 that was signed into law in 2007 and made, made active January 1, 2008, and it requires every city within their general plan to have a zone, a shelter, can operate without conditional use permit, and it goes on to talk about when the housing element is approved, that you have 12 months to designate that zoning, kind of hard for me to put a finger on when your housing element was approved, but I think it was last year or further back, so I'm just kind of wondering where we are, I've talked to staff at city and said, hey, what are we looking at as far as what zoning are you guys considering, R3, R4, but we can't give you that, you know, give me a little information now so I at least know where to look, so when the timing's right, I can be ready to open something, because I really believe the Victor Valley Rescue Mission can help you with your problem, it's not going to enhance the problem, it's not going to make the problem bigger, we are resourced, I'm not here asking you, give me a building, we will pay for a building, we have the resources, we have the volunteer labor, we have a lot of great talent to help with this problem. The Bible says, "The poor will always be with you," so the question is to us, what are we going to do about it, so what is the questions that might be lingering about homelessness and?
Well, I noticed that the population was, seemed to be growing under the, you know, going through the freeway, I could see the riverbed and it just seems like more tents and now it seems like buildings are coming up made out of garage doors and that sort of thing, my concern is, is that I know that the state has laid off 8,000 parole agents, pretty much, to me, you know, coming from the prison industry, that's doing away with your parole program, so I'm wondering, are those, are those parolees or are they probationers? I mean, is it county or is it state, and my understanding was, is that in order to get paroled or released on probation, you have to supply an address and that address has to be thoroughly checked out by an agent and it also has to be monitored, so I, I think it's very concerning that we could have a huge problem here, so, and, and then, why are they being dropped off there, if they're homeless, why aren't they going to the shelter? Is there no room in the shelter?
No room, 55 beds and we have 1,000 homeless, there's just not enough room.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, and we're, we're prepared to, you know, at least start at 100-bed facility and-
Is it just Victorville or is there homeless shelters in Hesperia and Apple Valley?
No, they're the only homeless shelter, we, we provide long-term shelter, um-
Say that again?
It's just a homeless shelter, right here at Amargosa.
And there's only one in this whole high desert?
Yes, yes, there's some homes that aren't real legal that are helping, um-
Well, I, I'm wondering, why is it just Victorville's problem, why, why isn't Apple Valley and Hesperia helping?
It's not, and we're talking to Hesperia and to Apple Valley as well, we understand the problem is vast and we, we're not just saying, hey, we're going to open a shelter in Victorville and bring all the problem here, no, we're going to help the people in Victorville and then we're going to go to Hesperia, we're going to help the people in Hesperia, we're going to go to Apple Valley and we want to help the people in Apple Valley, so we're not trying to attract more homeless, I, I don't see many homeless people in Randono Beach saying, hey, let's go to Victorville, it's a great place to go, you know, weather-wise, it's not the best place to go, the beach is better, so, so, you know, that's, that's our concerns, I, I've been coming before you, gentlemen and ladies, for a long time and, and it's, it's been the same story, we're working towards a general plan, I understand those things take time and we're, by no means trying to be pushy, but at least give me a direction, hey, R4, R3, go for it and, and we'll start looking and we'll start preparing and, and working towards something.
Are there children in the riverbed?
In the riverbed? There's a few, yeah, yeah, and that's the girl, fastest growing population, we're, I just had a meeting with Moses House Ministries this morning and, and we're going to be working towards family shelter, that's really where our heart is, because some of the men don't want to change, there's not a lot you can do, you can't make them stay in your facility, because we believe in, in a helping hand up, not a handout, we want to get these people to a place where they're stable, they're, they're paying their own way, they're living in their own houses, not just provide shelter and three meals and then they're out on the streets the rest of the day, no, it's structured, there's, 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 there's programming, there's structure, there's requirements, there's work therapy, there's all these things that come into play, so.
Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem and members of the council, the item before you tonight is just to give staff direction to proceed with the report, there hasn't been a report done, after it was brought up at the last council meeting, I had probably four or five people come to me with, with, I'll just say, interesting pieces of information that I'm looking forward to being able to share with the council and with the public, I think the discussion regarding the probation office at the last meeting confused the issue, making it something that appeared as if Victorville was unwilling to, to address the issues in Victorville, and really, I, I think what the, what the concerns of staff are that were expressed in the agenda item last time is that, as was expressed at the last meeting by the professionals in that industry, the rehabilitation is best done in, in the community of origin and we would agree with that, one of the questions that I have and I'd like to get an answer to, to bring back to this council, assuming you do give direction on this report, is if it's better for Victorville residents to be rehabilitated in Victorville, that's great, how is it better for Apple Valley residents and Hesperia residents to also be rehabilitated in Victorville or become homeless people in Victorville, that's one of, one of the big concerns that staff has, I, I think I met two more volunteers who are going to probably provide me with a tremendous amount of information for the report that I'm assuming you're going to approve this evening that, that we work on.
I, I think I'm not understanding what you're saying, when you say rehabilitated, are we talking about criminals, are we talking about families that are in need?
Well, it, it goes back to what was said at, at the last meeting, the council had a, a, a good discussion, there was some, some things said from the public podium that I think misrepresented Victorville staff's position, I did not want to, to disrupt the deliberations of the council, so I did not speak up, although I was very anxious to, I actually intend on, on putting some of that in the report that I'm assuming we'll get authorization to work on tonight, my, my concern- My, my concern, and it is not related specifically to item 15 here on the homeless, it's a contributing factor. And the concern that staff has expressed to the probation department is that it's, it's fine. We understand that we will have probationers that came from Victorville that come back to Victorville, similar to when the state was releasing parolees in San Bernardino County from the San Francisco area. And I know the county was very upset that, you know, at least release them in their county of origin. To me, and I want to research it more, it's very concerning if, and I'm saying if because I don't know, if in fact ultimately probationers who originally were from Hisperia and Apple Valley and other areas in the desert end up getting rehabilitated, probationers being former criminals, get rehabilitated in Victorville and ultimately if they don't have a home, if they're then released in Victorville and potentially, you know, guided to the river as the place to go, that causes me great concern. Certainly, I think this council will recognize that it is, there is a responsibility to, to, you know, assist the county in rehabilitating those, those probationers and, you know, former parolees. But I, I think what's been lost in this whole discussion, going back to two weeks ago, is the effect that those individuals from surrounding communities have on Victorville as well. So, you know, at, at this point, I would love to meet with both of these gentlemen in the preparation of, of the report that I'm assuming you're going to authorize in just a few minutes.
Well, my concern is, is that this can't just be Victorville's issue. I mean, if, if we're having parolees and homeless people from all over the high desert, I think all the cities need to get involved and the churches from every city need to be involved as well. It can't just be on the taxpayer. It has to be, there's just no money. So, but there has to be a concerted effort, a, a team effort for the whole high, high desert to get together and, and deal with it and, and pool their resources. And it just can't be put on one, on one dais. It, it has to be on, on all of the diasses. Does the council agree with that?
Well, I, you know, just from the standpoint of, of our homeless shelter here in the city of Victorville, we have been supporting that shelter since it started, years and years, many years. And we still continue to do it every year with our hut, some of those grant monies that we have. There is that concern that we're the only one in the high desert that have the homeless shelter. And obviously, it's, it's limited. 65 best, I guess, what was that? So it's limited. But I, I think that we ought to let staff get together with those people that are in the business. And Ron, you know, you, you do a lot of good work out there with, with, with your mission. And, and then come back with the report and see what we can do. And as far as working with the other cities, maybe we do need to put a little bit more, more pressure on the other cities there. Everyone has a responsibility for their communities.
Agreed, Rudy. Clearly, Victorville's been taking care of the issue for, for a long time now.
I don't personally think city government is particularly qualified to attempt to deal with, with the homeless problem. I, I think we have people who work in that field, who are knowledgeable, understand the various causes of homelessness, because it's not just one cause. It's not just a bad economy. Because we've had homeless people when the economy was wonderful. So it's, it's, it's a complex problem and I'd rather rely on the people who know that problem and see where the city can play a role in it.
I think that's all we're saying is, you know, we're, we're resourced and ready to, to make that step. Somewhere, it has to start somewhere. Obviously, I'm not resourced to open a shelter in all four of our communities today, but I have to start somewhere. And so I'm just looking for the first city that says, Ron, here's the zone, go find it, go do it. And, and, you know, of course, we're accountable to our city and we do it, we do it, you know, with the utmost integrity and by the, by the standards of the law. And then we, we expand from there.
I think we need to understand where the, where the funding comes from for this because it's probably not going to come out of the city budget.
Right. That's why we have local donors and there's grants and those kind of resources available.
Those are all the facts we need to gather.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, we can address the concerns that you have because we don't just release people when they graduate our program. There's transition. We make sure that they're set up and that they are living life and able to get out there. So, you know, we help them. And if they're from Apple Valley, we're going to transition them to Apple Valley or whatever, however that looks like. But I'm going to leave my card, so please include me in, in any of the meetings that you have.
Thank you, Ron. Mr. Robertson, any, any other comment other than you, you will proceed with the report?
If that's the direction of the council and that's what I'm hearing, then certainly we will.
And I, I think this has to be officially agendized on the other cities. We can't make them agendize it, but it seems to me this is a Victor Valley-wide issue and, and specifically, I see it as, as the county being the agent of the state should be the catalyst to that. And if anything is going to come out of this in an official nature, it ought to be a trigger that ought to be pulled simultaneously or within a week or two of all four cities up here in the Victor Valley, not just Victorville. Let's get us started. And then App, maybe Apple Valley, Hisperia, and Alano might catch on. No, if, if there is going to be a unified effort for 400,000 people, let's pull that trigger at the same time. So, but I think it's, it begins with maybe the study and then that the, then the county putting their direction into it, not the least of which is the League of California Cities and any efforts that they have done in a, a bit of a regional sense in other parts of the state would be another resource.
Just a quick comment. I can give us names of other council members in other cities that I've been speaking with to maybe set up a meeting to kind of network that anyway, if I can.
Couldn't hurt for us to lead the way.
Yeah. And that report, that report can, can perhaps outline a coalition of the cities. In fact, to get grants, I, I think you'd stand a better chance if you had four cities applying for a major.
Granters are looking at collaboration and you're seeing a lot of that now. We're partnering with Moses House and a lot of other organizations, even High Desert Homeless Services, Salvation Army. We're all beginning to work together and it's a great thing. It's the way it should be. We all do what we do best and we come together and can really make a difference, so.
Thank you, Ron. Thank you. Okay. We'll go on to item 16. The request to direct staff to provide a report regarding funding for retention of redevelopment agency employees.
Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the council, this is another item that was requested and we're certainly willing to provide such a report, just following the procedures that were set up a little over a year ago now, I think, where individual, individual council members request an item and it comes back to the full council to give direction to staff to proceed. So that's, that's the step that we're at with this.
Isn't this a budget issue? I mean, aren't you required, you've got a budget you have to deal with and you're staffing the city and you're going to have to staff it within the boundaries of that budget?
That is correct. That is correct. The, the staff members whose ultimately their position was eliminated with the RDA, we did move into a handful of vacancies that we did have this year and we're happy to provide that, that report to the council.
Item 17.
Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the council, I put this item on the agenda just to give a little bit of an update to you collectively and to the members of the public. In, on September 21, 1962, the city of Victorville incorporated. So therefore, September 21, 2012 is our silver anniversary. Certainly, Victorville has had its share of ups and downs and there may still be some dark clouds on the horizon, but you only turn 50 once. And I've, I've begun with staff looking at a couple of activities that would not be funded by the city that we're kind of in, as the gentleman earlier talking about the mural, we're in a phase of gauging public interest in participating in such, such endeavors. One would be a dinner on the night of our anniversary, of our silver anniversary, something that would be funded by the ticket buyers, not funded by the city. And I'm working on a, a very brief program regarding the history of Victorville and specifically trying to focus on the incorporation efforts. So to the extent any of you know, folks that were involved in that, I have met with some former council members to get some names and hopefully we're able to put together a nice, a nice production that, that goes over a little bit of the, the early history of Victorville. Another item that I'm gauging public support for, in fact, I'll be talking about it tomorrow at the Chamber of Commerce breakfast, is actually a public art piece, something that will be a permanent feature for the city. Again, this would be entirely funded by the public, not by, by city funds, something of like a commemorative brick program that other communities have engaged in. If the support is there, then we'll bring that back to the city council for, for, for consideration and approval. If it's not, then we won't do that piece. But ultimately, we do plan on having at least the, the dinner and a little bit of a production to celebrate the silver anniversary.
Question? Thank you. Item 18 is council committee reports. Start here on my right.
Just the Mojave Desert Air Quality Management District, you might have read the story. The board, again, this is almost two years later, unanimously voted to ask the state to suspend AB 32. We had one abstention and everybody else and about a third of that board is brand-new people from all corners of the county, voted yes. Again, and there's indications now that other air quality districts are taking on that issue. It's rather onerous, heavy-handed, as I've been saying over and over again, never can say it enough, but that's one of those rules out there that can be changed. Alls it takes is a vote of the legislature and a governor getting their act together. So we're doing our part locally, our air quality district, and have put that agenda back in front of the state and the state legislature. And we've sent a letter to all the congressmen in, in the state as well. And I hope all the candidates, Ms. Vias and Mayor McEckern as well, let them know that that's an issue that can be, come out of the state, the federal level to change that rule. You can have a federal law that says, here's the rules. And by the way, California, you can't be any more heavy-handed than the federal law. That's how that can be dealt at the national level as well. So those running for the congressional seat up here, that might be one of the things they, one of those little small things you take back to Washington with them when they get elected.
Okay, item 19. It's a discussion of possible action regarding items for the upcoming city council agenda. I'll start, Angel? None?
I don't have any.
I don't have any.
None. Right. And number 20 is report from council members and staff.
We don't have anything to add at this point. Thank you.
Yeah, I do.
You have one.
I just took, you saw the story just the other day in the daily press about the cargo aircraft. That's been our agenda for, since George Air Force Base closed and we began the process of evolving that airport out there is to have a car, a major cargo, maintenance and that sort of thing and not necessarily a passenger. That may come someday, but it'll be an incidental issue. But the cargo story is one of those pieces that we've been working on. I think it's moving closer to that. But one of the items that we approved here not too recently was the, I don't know how expensive that fire equipment is out there for the cargo, fighting the cargo, but this piece of equipment is uniquely designed to fight cargoes in a different way than they've ever done before. And it's stationed out there. We're using it, the new one now. And everybody out there that wants to do business, and remember, we've got the, the almost the longest runway in the United States with the exception of Colorado with about 150 feet on us. We have a three-mile runway out there that can handle any airplane the world has to offer. So with respect to cargo, we can do it. Well, we also have to fight that fire. Well, those companies out there know that, that this is a unique airport with a unique piece of equipment and a trained fire staff out there to deal with that. And I was impressed with the, the little coverage I went out there with. Mr. Messler took me out there and we did the tour of that truck and I saw it in operations. That was rather eye-opening, so I'm impressed with that. That's, that's going to be one of those things. And by the way, just as a, I've got the numbers right, our O and M right now for the airport, we're taking roughly a little over 8 million and our expenses on operations of about 6 million. Is that a ballpark figure?
That sounds like what we've adopted as a part of our budgeted.
The airport today is making money and we'll move into a more positive envelope than that as companies begin to anchor in out there.
Therefore, this meeting is adjourned.